So Mike Crowley is joining us, looks like. So what I would like to do is have a motion to open the meeting.
Move.
Open the meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Do we need someone to take notes, or is this a non-note taking session?
I'm not sure we're gonna need notes, cuz of what we're doing is fairly simple. And I will write up, I've already written the one thing for the dog grooming.
Well, technically, the answer is yes. So we started the meeting at 6:02. I made the motion to open. Second, we need to keep track of that stuff.
Okay. So we're not expecting that?
Volunteer in, Vicky, love it.
Beth isn't gonna be here on time. She had some sort of family thing, so. Let's see.
All right. What was the time?
6:02.
Yeah. Okay.
Vicky, if you can email me your email address, and I can give you a copy of the video, once I process it after the meeting, and you can just go off of the video and take your notes.
Oh, cool.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right, I'm gonna designate Dave Funioli as a voting member for this meeting, and polling the members on opening the meeting. Vicky?
Yes.
Darlene? And Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, so the meeting is open. So so we had the issue with the lady and the dog grooming. So did you all get the thing that Beth sent out with the documents for this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So the section B of, well, what is it? 14526, okay, is the zoning article. And
So this, what we're gonna, we're gonna start talking about this now?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanna be clear.
Yep, and so if you go down to, let's see here. The layout on this goofy thing is so hard to figure out. Oh, I see, she, she put it in there. Cool. So if you, if you go down that piece, you can see in red, Beth has put in to, to see if the town will vote to amend section 14546B9 to read as follows, and all I did was add dog grooming establishment to that section nine. So that's pretty damn simple. Does anybody have any objection to that, or suggestions for other things that we should do while we're here? Or what?
Are there known, or is there a definition of a dog grooming establishment that would, like, for example, I see Animal Veterinary Hospital, is there, do you need to have a specific definition somewhere in the world that, for example, the Bullying Inspector could look at, or Commercial Kennel, or is it just considered this is a known concept?
I, I was gonna just consider it a known concept rather than trying to define it. Because it, it, it looked to me like there's some fairly actually well-established parameters for people to do dog grooming successfully, so.
And they do have to get permits from other, like the Board of Health, etc.
Yeah, yeah, well, she already got the permit from the Board of Health, so.
Dog grooming establishment seems broad enough that if there was some weird circumstance we're not aware of right now, that it could probably be covered by that umbrella.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
The only thing that I had was my, you know, it's all how we tend to talk, but my first word go-to was dog grooming facility, but I think establishment is maybe better. I was just looking up the definition to see if there was any kind of a difference. I think it covers it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, a facility, I don't know, might be a little complex.
Place, amenity, or piece of equipment. Establishment means just to establish. Okay.
All right, so I tried to get into the planning board, and they sloughed me off and said we want you to send us something in writing, or some darn thing, so.
What is it?
I said, I said to Beth, they want us to write the bylaw, that's fine, you know, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna do, but I think where we're, what I'd like to do is, is have the board approve this wording, and approve the process of sending it to the planning board, because in order to vote on it at the next town meeting, it would have, they would have to have a hearing, the planning board has to hold a hearing. So and the other thing I would like to do is, is send it directly to the town meeting warrant people, saying, you know, this is, this is what we wanna do on town meeting, in case the planning board wants to drag their feet, or, you know, Lord knows what they, they, they don't wanna work, or something like that, you know, so.
Bill, what are the two, what are the different processes to get something on the warranted town meeting? I understand the planning board, cuz they typically, you know, they held the public hearing, and, and requested on the warrant. What's the alternate process?
Well, I mean, I, I put a couple by petition on one time, and the planning board, you know, ignored me and didn't hold a hearing, and, and Adam was, was all upset about the Attorney General, you know, not approving the bylaws, even though, you know, we had a clear spot zoning case that the Attorney General, and, and I complained about it to the Attorney General, he still approved the spot zoning thing, so.
Yeah, that's typically, that, that's pretty much a rubber stamp, unless you're doing something totally whacked out, or crazy, or good against zoning, so. So when you say by petition, you need a certain amount of, so how can it go forward by petition?
Well, you, you need to get signatures, but that, the board can just request that the selectmen add it to the warrant.
Yep.
You can.
And then, and then it's the planning board's job to hold a hearing, and we've got time to harass them, and I, and I, you know, I promise you I will, if they don't hold a hearing.
So absent the planning board being on board, cuz ultimately, you want everybody on board, and then the town
Oh, sure.
But if they weren't on board, or didn't have time for it, or whatever reason, can the selectmen go forward getting it on the warrant, without that?
Yeah, they can put it on the warrant, but then, you know, we wouldn't be able to vote on it if, if the planning board hasn't done their job.
Unless we got X amount of signatures from the town.
No, even with signatures, no, the planning board has to, has to have a whole hearing on any change to the zoning bylaw.
Period. Okay, so there is only that one process then. Gotcha.
Okay.
I was just trying to close off their options, so they can have a hearing, or they can have a hearing.
No, the formality of us talking about this, and taking a vote on it, and sending it over, I think helps.
Yeah, I think it would help, too. So is there a motion?
Sure, I move to to send this proposed bylaw change to the planning board to hold a public hearing, and also to send to the selectmen to put on the warrant for the next town meeting. That was long.
That's good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Polling the members. David?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, okay. Motion carries. All right.
Thanks for doing that, Bill, by the way. That's, that's cool, that you jumped right on it, so.
So now, there's another thing that we, we I don't know why they want me to do this, but how do I get back to where I was here? Oh, I see, here we go. On the age restricted development bylaw, right? So that's in your, in your packet that Beth sent out. So if you take a look at that, I didn't, I didn't mark this one up because it's a little more complicated. But their, their bylaw, if you go to the applicability section, it lists the various zoning districts that the law can be used in, and they're all listed, so I don't know what the point of that was, but the section 1A says two or more acres of land, okay, so. I
Can I ask you a question, Bill? What is the purpose of bringing this before us? What, what is the goal here?
Well, it's just, I would, I would like to modify this bylaw, and I think it'll be, I think it would be better to do it as a zoning board, rather than individually, since I just haven't had any luck at the planning board. I, I don't think Lance likes me, or some darn thing. He certainly won't listen to me. And
Well, I, I understand why you wanna modify this. I didn't read the whole thing in depth, but I, I think you and I may have attended that meeting, or saw something about it, I'm like,
Yes.
This isn't gonna do anything. You
I know.
You have two acres, and you have to have town water, um, that's not gonna happen.
No, it's
We're all away from the center lots. So it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, well, I mean, the telling thing is that nobody has filed a project on this bylaw, you know, I mean, and with the density bonus that they gave, I mean, I don't understand that one at all. It, it doesn't make any sense to me, but anyway.
Trying to make it so not everybody could do it, but in the end, I, this is the kind of thing where maybe you should be identifying on a, on an assessor map, or on a map, what kind, what locations really would benefit for this type of thing, and then making sure the criteria fits.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it was, you know, basically copied from Littleton's bylaw, and Littleton, they, they have done a couple of projects under this bylaw, so, but, you know, houses, housing is way more expensive there, so people, there's more money involved. So what I, what I wanted to do, and Darlene will recognize this, but I wanted to drop the, the two or more acres to, I mean, I, I would even go half acre, because we have, we have a lot of pre-existing non-conforming lots that are half acre. And the, so I'm, I'm gonna say ha, at least a half an acre in the downtown commercial district, and neighborhood commercial district. Because I wouldn't wanna go carte blanche all over town with half acres.
That makes sense.
That would be kinda weird, I think it would, it would, anyway. But anyway, the half acre minimum in downtown commercial. And then the, the frontage, and I think your, your comment about the water is, is a good thing, too, because well, downtown, we've got water, right? We've got town water downtown, so we could, we could leave that one alone, but.
Well, the thing is, Bill, is even if you change the, the number of units, the density, or the parcel size, basically, is this implying that if you can't connect to town water, you can't do it?
Yep.
That's what, it's not implying, it's, it's explicit.
Right, so, so then
Taking no laundry.
So that then begs the question, how is this going to help with anything? Because if you're not right along where the suit, where the water is now, who knows when they're gonna build out into the nooks and crannies of town, and if you've got a parcel that meets all the other requirements, but no town water,
Yeah.
don't even bother replying.
Yeah. All right, well, let's delete that one, then, you know, we'll propose the, the area change, but only in downtown commercial, or neighborhood commercial, not in R, A, R, B, or, or, we don't want this kind of development in real commercial districts, cuz we don't have enough commercial land every time I talk to people. So, so, you know, we don't wanna put housing in a commercial district, I think that's silly, so. My wife is disagreeing with me, but whatever.
We have housing in our commercial districts.
Where is that?
All over downtown, you've got multifamily housing, all, all in the center of town.
But, but is, is that in the commercial district, though?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Or is it downtown commercial?
Yeah, there's a lot in the DCD.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm saying, okay, the DCD, I'm okay with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And are you, are you suggesting to are you, are you proposing that we remove, like, residential aquifer, residential B district commercial, you, we're gonna strike that out, or are we having two different requirements, depending upon what zone you're in?
Yeah, I think it's two different requirements.
Okay.
And the other thing, in the DCD district, I don't know about the 100 feet of frontage, too.
Yeah.
I, I think we should get a map out, and, and start, like, saying, okay, where else, and work backwards, cuz we can keep, we can amend this, and find out that it's still gonna be too restrictive.
Okay. Well, that sounds smart.
Yeah. There was something, I forget which meeting it was, that I was working in the other night, and I saw somebody had some maps with some nice overlays on it, with all of the districts basically laid out in it. Could probably get in touch with Ronnie Kell, and see if we can get a copy of that, cuz it, it looked like it was a pretty decent map of where building could potentially happen, as opposed to all the different districts that we have now, that are pretty prohibitive, just because they're already pretty built out. So.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's fine, I, well.
The other thing, I'll just throw this out there, I could see including a little bit more of the downtown area, but then, there's a lot that's not in the DCD district.
I know, I hear you. I was thinking about saying, within 1,000 feet of the DCD.
Yeah, that was my first thing, was maybe, yeah, either feet, or, you know, half a mile, or, you know, whatever that is, to include, you know, like, group 13, 119, the little neighborhoods that are clustered in between.
Yep. No, I, I agree, that, that was one of my thoughts, too. I, I don't wanna try to change the bounds of the downtown commercial district, but if we, if we did some kind of a radius number, we could, we could include lots that are close enough, you know.
Yeah.
Just a quick thought, just to jump in, if you are gonna include a distance, you wanna think about whether or not you want it to be a distance on the same street, or just from any property line, because you could theoretically have a, a large lot, that someone measures 1,000 feet from the back of, and arrives at the back of another lot, in a whole nother neighborhood. So just think about whether or not, which one of those you, you're, you're going for, in terms of, my brain is just logistically working through things at this point, so this, as a clarification.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mike, thanks. Yeah, it's, I mean, the other list, the other thing you can do is target, we could target parcels in the downtown commercial area. All right, so we'll, we'll come back and do this. The other the other change I wanted, well, I've gotta, I have to look in my email, I sent Beth. Oh, here it is. Sent.
Hold on.
No, not quite. What did I do? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, uh.
And I think the other reason, Bill, for, and I'm totally guessing here, cuz I wasn't a part of designing this, the, part of the reasoning for town water may have been, then again, it is two acre lots, I'm thinking, we, we don't have any public sewage in towns, and everything is private septic. So what do, you know, you have a septic system of a certain, your well has to be a certain distance away, so given that, it might be harder to develop, so the town water kinda takes that out of the equation for smaller lots, but they had two acres, so maybe, never mind.
Oh, no, you, you, I mean, you have a point, it would, it might be tough to get a septic system in a well on a half acre lot.
Not only that, it would be tough to get a septic system that doesn't get too close to the neighbor's well, not just your own, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we'll have to think about that.
The water department may have some maps to share, we could probably, you know, check out and identify all the areas that do have town water.
All right. Okay, so we, we have some time to work this one out, cuz I, I think it's more complex. And, you know, the, the other issue I had, instead of, you know, they have units in here. Where is it? So cottage dwellings, or two-family dwellings, four units per acre. The thing I'm having trouble with is, is I think it should be in terms of bedrooms per acre, because we have the septic system, I mean, and I, and I know the, I know the, I talked to the Board of Health about it, and I think they, they told me that you could do, like, up to eight bedrooms per acre, or something.
Well, if I look at this as a real estate professional, I don't, as first, I, I'm not understanding, so a cottage, cottage dwellings, or two-family dwellings, only four units per acre, townhouses, you can have eight units. Do I really care what the architecture is? For how many units? I don't, I don't know.
Right, I don't know either.
Where we don't need to be?
Yeah. All right, so we'll think about that.
Taking a look at all of that together, it's probably a good idea.
All right, I don't know when our, when our next meeting, oh, it's when is it, anyway?
I think it's the 23rd, is that right?
23rd, the continuation of 478 Main Street.
What is, are, what's the legality of us doing work groups? Does it have to be public? I would think, right?
It has to, yeah, it kinda has to be public, posted, yeah.
Yeah, cuz anytime, it doesn't matter, anytime three or more of us get together, we have a quorum, so that's a problem.
Yeah.
No reason why we couldn't do a work group, and, you know, we probably don't have to bother a lot of people, and just
Right. All right, let's, we can schedule something else, then, before the, the 23rd? Or after the 23rd, what do you think?
Yeah, whenever you want. We'll just get, um, we kinda like it to do list, we need some maps. We need water department. And the zoning, the zoning maps.
Yeah.
Assessor maps aren't bad. You know what, I think, we'll have to look and see, there's, I think we have a decent mapping system online. I'm just wanting to make sure it has the frontage, and the lot sizes on it, and with the zoning, that would be great.
Well, I think, you know, we've got this big push from the the DHCD, you know, the state wanting us to build affordable housing under their terms. And, you know, they want 18 units. If we filled 18 units of affordable housing, then we can tell contractors that wanna do comprehensive permits to pound sand for a year, or some darn thing.
Is that all we need, is 18?
Well, it's just, they, they've got this new thing where they have MBTA communities. And believe it or not, we are an MBA, MBTA associated community. I thought you'd get a kick out of that.
We have, sorry.
The proximity
They want, they want us to, they want us to do all kinds of things, I mean, we have to put in bylaws that are, you know, we, we're supposed to allow 15 multifamily units per acre, or some damn thing, and, you know, it's just not gonna happen, cuz we, we could put that bylaw in, and, and nobody could get a septic permit for it, so, you know, it's never gonna be built, so. Without a
Category of us falling under Boston's median income, too.
Yeah, well, we're, we're like, we're at 90, and the county is, or Boston is at 110. And that's like the whole eastern part of Massachusetts, is at 110 median, or something. But anyway, I just think we should, we should definitely mess around with this, because I'm just totally flabbergasted that nobody has applied for anything. With the housing prices we got now, I mean, what, what, what's, even the, even a banker could figure this out, you know, and they're notoriously stupid and risk averse.
Housing of all kinds, and we are an aging population as well, so.
Right.
People just don't have anywhere to go.
Yep.
Well, that's the intent of this bylaw, supposed to assist with age restricted development, but.
Right, let's make it usable.
Right, yeah, okay. All right, so
What else you got for us?
I guess, let, let Beth know what what maps and stuff you've gotten ahold of, and, and then she can broadcast that.
Okay.
And
Or she may already have access to these maps, so.
Right.
If you're gonna contact her, Darlene, just find out what's already on hand, so you don't have to run around.
I'll go talk to the water department, see what I can get for a downtown distribution I'll go talk to the water department, see what I can get for a downtown, uh, distribution map. And, um, I mean, should we be looking at West Townsend as well in this or not? It has a downtown commercial district.
It does?
Kinda.
Not a downtown, but they have, um, neighborhood.
Oh, is it neighborhood?
I think, I think they have neighborhood and outlining, and then the harbor has neighborhood and outlining, if I remember correctly. We haven't had to deal with that in a while.
I know.
Only downtown. We should be a one zip code town too.
Yeah, that's true.
I like having my own zip code.
You, West Townsend, are you, are you in West Townsend?
Yep.
Yeah, they'll never let it happen.
Yeah. All right.
We've got a, um, a planning board, I think, a mandatory referral too. I'm not looking at the.
Oh, yeah, I can't see my screen, because Vicky's got it.
There we go.
There we go. Let's see. So this Campbell Farm, this was a, a so-called open space preservation development. And Beth sent us a thing on this, so they have, uh, what is this?
So they're just looking for commentary, right? What's the action here? I wasn't clear to me.
The planning board, they want occupancy permits, because the process took so long to get something that they need. And they want their, they want their occupancy, so they sold a couple pieces of land, I guess they're building, they want occupancy permit, so I don't, I don't know.
No, I'm, uh, and, and it's not quite that simple. The, in an open space preservation development, the, you have to give some open space to the town, the state, the land trust, whatever. And, um, so, um, my buddy Lance, they're interpreted, it's, uh, the, the bylaw says it has to be conveyed to somebody and, uh, so these guys, their brilliant idea was they were gonna sell the open space, so they could, they would get the money for the open space and sell it to the state, you know? Yeah, so they're, they're definitely on crack, but anyway, the, uh, the states that, uh, uh, no, we don't, we don't buy open space like that. We'll take the open space for nothing, but we won't buy it. And, uh, and that, thank God, because that was a, that was definitely a, a misinterpretation of the bylaw. And, um, so, uh, and, and they've had meetings and my, you know, let's modify the permit, and they've done all this stuff, but, one of the things that they agreed to was to uh, record a conservation restriction on the open space prior. Pardon?
Which is almost complete.
Oh, it's almost complete?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Beth says, uh, or Joan says that the, the, uh, conservation restriction is almost complete. So I don't see any reason to give them an occupancy permit. And the other problem that they have is that the fire pond is not operational, so I don't think they're gonna be able to get an occupancy permit without an operating fire pond. So, which we have nothing to do with, but, uh, the, so I don't know, the planning board, uh, uh, may allow them to get their occupancy permit, but it's giving up all the leverage that we have, the town has, in order to make them comply.
They're about to start working on the fire.
Oh, okay.
And you know what happens every time we go on some good faith bill, right?
Oh, yeah, right. No, there's no such, there's no such thing in the land use business, sorry. Faith? It might snow some tomorrow. That's, that's about all we got.
I gotta, at this point, but it clearly you guys know what you're talking about, because I can hear everything that's going on right now. Um, I'm sorry for not being able to stay for the whole thing, but I'm glad I was able to jump on and hear where things were going at. I appreciate it. All right, I'll see you guys again soon.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, so, um.
So it sounds like we're, we want them to get the conservation restriction before they get their building permit, right?
They can't sell the place without a C E O, C of O.
Yeah.
The building permits they already got, so. Uh, yeah, I mean, that's where I'm at. Do we need to make a motion? Probably, that's a good idea. Somebody want to make a motion?
Normally do that? We make a motion for a referral comment?
We don't normally, but.
So.
Say negative, do we want to say no comment and let them handle it?
No, I think, oh, I mean, I think we should, should put a comment in, because we're, it sounds like we're, we're, we have a strong opinion here of, of not making, I think the, I move that uh, we make a comment saying that there should be no change in conditions. Is that, would that be the right way to do it?
Or no change in the process. Everything's got to follow in, in line like it usually does.
All right, second.
Okay. All right, cool. Polling the members. David?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, okay, motion carries. All right, so we'll have Beth, um, send that over to the, uh, planning board. The, the hearing is, I don't know, it's coming up. But Joan, Joan seems to be optimistic that they're gonna actually meet the conditions before they talk about waiving them.
That's good.
Yeah, okay.
Awesome.
All right, well, great, thank you very much. Anything, anything else? Anybody have any burning, uh, issues?
No, propose some, um, propose a couple times, couple dates for a work group and, um, I'll email Beth and let her know that we need for maps.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
All right, thanks very much.
Shall we move to clo- close the meeting?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Close the meeting.
Second.
What time?
It's, um, six thirty-nine. And, uh, polling the members, David?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, okay. Meeting's closed. Thanks very much, kids.